The green light, someone turned off your green light on the side.
Okay, it's on. Okay. Call the meeting back to order. Do we have anything to report out, Kimberly?
Now, the City Council convened in closed session to meet with the city's labor negotiators. There is no reportable action. Thank you.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Malsen.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Huer.
Here. Public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address City Council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk.
Okay. If you join me in a silent prayer and then flag salute pledge of allegiance by Bob Ballet, a Vietnam veteran.
Tonight, we're honoring Bob Ballet. He was born and raised in Bamberg, Germany on December 16th, 1962 at age 16. He and his family immigrated to Elkhart, California. After graduating from Elkhart High School, he joined the United States Army on December 2nd, 1964. While in the Army, on January 15th, 1969, he became a United States citizen. He served in Vietnam and other places from 1970 to 1971. Upon return to civilian life, he worked as a human resource specialist for Pacific Bell and AT&amp;T and retired on December 29th, 2001. Bob moved to Galt shortly thereafter. He resides along with his brother Henry at Three Palms Mobile Estates. In retirement, he's continued to serve his community by helping his fellow veterans obtain their benefits and helping the elderly in whatever way he can. Bob was appointed to serve on the Commission on Aging and has a newspaper column geared towards seniors in the Galt Herald. On the last, at the last commission meeting on January 25th, he was elected by his peers to serve as the chairperson. Thank you, Bob, for your service.
You're welcome.
And this is a pledge.
That's been an orange. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor.
Video statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, February 9th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, February 10th at 9:00 a.m. The City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Agenda approvals, additions and/or deletions? Svenan? We'll move on to presentations. Subject: Introduction of New Employee, David Rodriguez, Facilities Maintenance Worker.
Mayor and council members, it's my pleasure to introduce the newest addition to our Public Works team. This is David Rodriguez and he has recently started early in January as our newest Facilities Maintenance Worker II and we're kind of replacing some retired members from our, from our, from our team, anyway. He has 13 years of construction experience and maintenance experience as well. He is married with two children that are teenagers, so that explains a little bit of the gray hair that's starting to show up, or at least that's what his wife says. He has spent many years coaching baseball and softball and football and soccer with his wife and with their kids and they moved a lot when he was a child and he's hoping to kind of settle down and maybe even move from his current home in Odessa closer to Galt. So, we're very excited to have him onboard and welcome David Rodriguez tonight.
Thank you.
Subject: Solid Waste Legislative Update, Public Works Department.
Madam Mayor and council members, this item tonight is an informational presentation regarding some of the substantive changes that have occurred over the last decade and are particularly continuing to occur in the legislative arena relative to solid waste legislation and evolving and new mandates, some of which are still in the regulatory rulemaking phase that are going to have a dramatic impact on how cities and counties are required to provide solid waste and refuse collection services going forward, particularly in terms of diversion mandates. And I don't want to steal any of our speakers' thunder tonight, but we're bringing this to you ahead of actually bringing detailed contract items. We're in the process of negotiating a long-term extension to our solid waste franchise collection agreement and these are the issues and these legislative items you're going to hear about tonight that are going to be driving changes in our contracts and the way we do business. And as we can all guess, those things don't come cheaply. Those are going to be to meet all these new mandates on food waste and organic waste and, and higher goals for recycling and issues with contamination of recycled materials. We're going to have to implement new programs and our partner in this is Cal Waste as our current contractor. And they, I'd like to introduce Josh Panay. He is a consultant working for Cal Waste and is an expert in sort of the legislative field around solid waste for many years and he's going to walk us through some of the recent past and coming legislative changes that are in the works.
Well, thank you, Steve, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you for your service. I served on the City Council in Sacramento a few years ago. Seems like a lifetime ago now, about 20 years ago, and served on the County Board of Education too, so I appreciate what you're doing on a daily basis. It's a lot of work, so thank you for that. Let me start with, let's see if I can work this. So, the idea was to give you an overview from 1995 through 2008 and then 2009 through 2025. First of all, most everyone remembers a famous piece of law, AB 939 by Byron Shear. That was the first time the state decided, hey, we have to do more than what we were doing. This was 1989 and the goal was to do 50% of diversion out of the landfill in recyclables by the year 2000. In, by 2005, Galt had, had gotten to the level of 52% recyclables. Now, these are usually considered everything from lumber to bottles and cans to newspaper, cardboard, a whole array of recyclables. The next piece that comes is, this is an overview of what I'll talk about in the next few moments and it gives you kind of the timeline from 2006 all the way through 2020 and then beyond is 2025. You'll see each of the pieces of legislation and you'll see, I'll give you kind of a sense of some of the philosophy behind the legislation and why it passed. First of all, Governor Schwarzenegger signed in 2006, AB 32. That was the foundation for a lot of what would happen in the next decade. And in that decade, the Air Board was assigned to give a scoping plan of how we're going to achieve this. Cities and counties were to look on and decide how they were going to achieve it through their carbon footprint. And Cal Waste has done their carbon footprint on behalf of you as your partner on the solid waste and recycling side. The big program here that was just reauthorized is the Cap and Trade Program. Last year, Governor Brown signed a, an extension to the Cap and Trade Program and I'll talk about that a little later. The piece for solid waste and recycling that is different out of this piece and is now coming to fruition is the organics piece. And the basis is organics buried in land creates methane. That methane creates this greenhouse gas effect. There are two pieces that are most important in, in this short-lived climate pollutants. One is the methane that comes from organics percolating in a landfill and the other is black carbon. Those two pieces in the world environment are the most caustic to the greenhouse gas effect. And so, therefore, the Air Board is focusing on those two, but they're focusing on all of it, but those two primarily. And, and we'll talk a little about that, but first, let me give you an overview of some of the other legislation that has passed to give you a sense of the importance of commercial recycling. This piece of legislation, AB 341, decided that we would focus on generators and generators would be on the hook to recycle. So, your partner, Cal Waste, starts, puts together a program that requires generators of this waste to be recycled. So, first of all, as you can see, phased in over time, it begins in 2012 and every commercial business with four cubic yards or more of trash collected would have to have a recycling program. The next piece is every multifamily of five or more units would have to have a recycling program. In 2020, the statewide goal is set and Cal Recycle is to report back to the legislature how they're going to accomplish a 75% recycling goal statewide. With that, Cal Recycle has held a number of hearings on the issue and they're working on different plans to require cities and counties to recycle beyond just generators as in this case. Next came 1826, a bill by a Seminim Chesbro before he left the legislature and this targeted food waste. So, looking at food in a variety of areas and first looking at the biggest producers of food. So, eight cubic yards a week of organic waste, this would be an industrial or a commercial facility, a food facility that's making something or producing something. So, they, the legislature thought, let's first make them do it and then secondly, by 2017, anyone who has four cubic yards of organic waste again, so this is still a big, this is like a, a four cubic yard, the standard what you see in the garbage behind a pretty good-sized restaurant, but this is all, all organic waste. So, then by 2019, it would be those who have four cubic yards of solid waste. So, this is your average business and they would be required to recycle as well. So, it goes on the generator and your provider would help initiate this. One piece that could come next by 2020, if Cal Recycle decides in their numbers statewide that they haven't achieved 50% diversion out of the landfill from this organic fragment, then they have the authority under the law to pull the trigger and require generators of two cubic yards of solid waste. So, now we're getting down to half that bin in the back of most restaurants, half of that would, those generators would be required just with their average solid waste to start recycling that organics. So, those laws went after the generator and that's kind of how they did it. And our sense is by 2020, Cal Recycle will be pulling this trigger because it will be tough to get to that 50% number without pulling that trigger. Another piece in the mix is AB 1594. Alternative daily cover has been used as a recyclable for 20 years now. The law allowed it to be done and you could take advantage of the recycling credit. An alternative daily cover is landfills every day has to, have to cover their garbage for vectors, for birds, and so the law allowed cities and counties to receive recycling credits for green waste that had been processed and use it to cover the landfill rather than importing virgin soil, digging soil and then putting soil on the top. So, the philosophy of the law then was this green waste was a good substitute for the virgin soil. As the years went by, it was supposed to be a temporary fix and the agreement inside the legislature was at some point we would phase this out. This is the law that phases that out. So, Galt's has been taking advantage of the law as it is and recycling that green waste by using it as cover for landfill and that's been a, an advantage and you were getting recycling credits for doing that. And I don't know the number of jurisdictions, but it, it's been happening all over the state. Now, because of the greenhouse gases, the methane that comes off of the landfill, they're basically saying, okay, everything's out of the landfill. The organics have to come out of the landfill and this is one of those pieces that has to come out. So, by 2018, Galt needs to define a plan to get that material and recycle it in a whole new way. And it could be composting, it could be chipping pieces of it for application on your road, on your roadbeds. There's a variety of things you can do with it and the, the state law is now reflecting that. By 2020, there will be no more diversion credits granted ADC of green waste. So, that gives you a, a pretty clear sense that the, the nature of what the state is proposing. Next is 1383 by Senator Laura. And this was an attempt in 2016 to look at the whole of the organic stream and say, how do we really get at it? And what they did in this bill was simply said, okay, any food, fiber, paper, wood products has to come out of the landfill. 50% by the year 2020 and 75% by the year 2025. Now, this, these are statewide targets, but each city will be responsible for their fair share of it. Cal Recycle is going through a, an extensive regulatory process right now and so they've laid out a, a variety of regulations. We're working with cities and counties, rural counties, and the, the recycling industry to find a fair and balanced and sensible way of implementing this law. But that, this will be the driver that will stop But that, this will be the driver that will stop in a big piece of the methane that's coming off of landfills. At some point, I think also, landfills will increase the way they're draining off the methane that exists in the landfills now. City of Sacramento has a flaring process. They used to sell that piece of methane, scrub it and sell it to the almond growers. So they're going to have to come up with a new way for their city closed landfill and try to figure out what else they do, because the restrictions are significant. So there's the two major pieces in 2020, 50%, and in 2025, 75%. It's about the methane. It's about the two most harmful pieces to the environment, and that's black carbon and methane from landfills. So those are the two on the front burner, you might say, for the California Air Resources Board. So this gives you kind of an overview sense. I'm prepared to answer any questions you might have, and I think that Jack Fiore from Cal Waste is ready to give you a kind of a final slide as well. Any questions for me, Mayor, or Council?
Questions? Thank you so much.
All right, Josh, thank you very much. As Mr. Winkler said at the onset of this, we're in discussions with the city, and we are preparing solutions for everything that Josh has talked about. You've got five pieces of legislation, five laws up there that need to be addressed. One of the shortfalls of the current contract with GALT is it doesn't allow for the kinds of flexibility, and this is a hindsight comment that I think we need to fix going forward, but it doesn't allow for the kinds of flexibility that you need to address, the sixth one that isn't up there yet because it hasn't been passed. So we're going to come back here in a few weeks with some solutions for the commercial and residential recycling component. You can see on our little table there that we intend to address at least four of the five issues with that. The organic waste collection and processing, there's two sides to that. Organic waste is almost 20% of the waste stream that goes into the landfill now, so getting it out is going to be a significant undertaking. We've got some collection programs in place already. I think last year I reported to you all that we were doing food waste collection in the schools and a couple of the larger grocery stores. Those have moved beyond pilot programs into full-blown programs, and so we're doing well with that. There's plenty of ground left to plow, but I think we've made some good progress so far. We're going to come back with, in this new contract, with solutions for organic waste collection and with some ideas for the processing option, which is the second half, probably the more difficult half, frankly, is, okay, now we did such a good job collecting it, what are we going to do with it? We're going to bring those solutions to you as well. And the final third of the pie will be to develop a transfer facility, and that kind of fits into the two that are above it. Having a transfer facility with the flexibility to do industrial collection and sorting, construction, demolition, sorting, do some load consolidation, to take small loads and turn them into large loads. It will be a destination where the public can come and bring their own waste. Contractors can come and bring material from their sites. It'll be a place where we can utilize the technology that'll take perhaps with organic waste, perhaps with the green waste, and that problem, we don't know yet is a problem, but we're going to have to come up with a solution. So we're excited. We've got, I think we've got a good strategy. I think the key word here is we need to present the city of GALT with an infrastructure solution so that you've got what you need in solid waste, just like you do in things related to the wastewater treatment plant, and things related to water and storm sewer as well. And Cal Waste is here to partner with the city of GALT. Yep.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
Public comment? Public comment, Gal Weber?
Good evening, Council. I gave some packets for you to look at based on the proposals for the extravaganza. I'm here on behalf of Shop Local and the Chamber of Commerce. We're asking the Council to support our venue request for our ninth annual extravaganza on March 24th. This free community event has grown in size each year and has become a highly anticipated event. The event's main financial support is through vendor booth fees. As of today, we have 60 booths reserved and five food vendors signed up. We still need more to pay for the event. We were presented with a proposal from Parks and Rec that was going to have the event on Fourth Street going north from C Street towards A Street. There's a map showing this proposal. Shop Local went over the proposal and came up with the following. The majority of the event would be on the promenade, the food vendors, the egg hunt, the egg drop, the Easter bunny pictures, and vendors. This would put too many people in one space. The vendors would be setting up alongside the field to the north and a funeral home, leaving out the majority of the Fourth Street businesses. The car show would be hidden around the corner on B Street. This would also leave the Fourth and C Street intersection open. We believe this is not only be bad for the flow of the event, but also very unsafe. There would be a lot of pedestrian traffic and auto traffic on the intersection of C and Fourth Street, too close to the crowds. This event attracts a lot of kids who do not necessarily pay attention to their surroundings. Our request would be for the event to be on Fourth Street between B Street and E Street, where traditionally it has been held. C Street would be also closed from Fifth Street to Third Street over the railroad tracks. There's a map showing our request also. The plan is to have the egg hunt, the egg drop, and the Easter bunny pictures on the promenade. The food vendors would be moved to the new parking lot at Fourth and C Street. We would put some tables and chairs on the promenade so that people could sit, eat, visit, watch their kids do the egg drop and the egg hunt, and also a place for them to watch for the Easter bunny pictures. The promenade would be a relaxed area, would be open. We wouldn't have any vendors or anything else on it. The vendors would line up on both sides of Fourth Street from B Street to E Street. Having the event spread from Fourth Street towards E Street would bring the Fourth Street businesses into the event instead of excluding them. People also like to stroll at an event, not be on top of one another. This would also be a great event to introduce the new Fourth Street to the community. Closing the Fourth and C Street intersection keeps the auto traffic further away from the kids. The car show and the Youth Commission Pancake Breakfast would be more featured on C Street instead of hidden away. I've included some individual letters of support from some of the Fourth Street businesses, as well as a letter signed by all of the Fourth Street business owners. Again, Shop Local and the Chamber are asking that the city council supports our venue request. We believe it will continue to grow this event and attract the quality of vendors which we are needing to help maintain the financial support. We want this traditional GALT event to thrive and grow. We believe in changing the venue would be downsizing the event. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Payne?
Good evening, Council. The GALT Beautification Committee has noticed while driving along the highways and the roads in the area that it's getting more and more litter and garbage. We are concerned that that attitude might spread to our community, so we've come up with a program called GALT Looking Good. We want it to be a very positive program and not one of shame on you. The goal is going to be to inspire the community to want our town looking clean and beautiful, including businesses, neighborhoods, individual homes, and individuals' litter. For a long time, the Beautification Committee has had a Home of the Month to inspire homeowners to make their home contribute to the beauty of the neighborhood, and we will continue that. We have continued it so far. And we hope to go into the elementary school and put a lot of emphasis on litter. We believe it's the best time to learn pride in the community is when the children are young and impressionable. So we want to visit the schools and give out litter bags, and it says litter bugs us, and we hope maybe we can have a litter bug actually visit the classrooms and impress the youth. Also, the high school, we want to bring them into our program. So we want to have a photography contest. Again, we're trying to be positive, trying to build pride in the community. So we want them to take a picture of a favorite place they have in GALT. You know, like a lot of these students in high school will be going away to college, and they'll think about, oh, GALT, I really loved this, or I really loved that. So we plan to have this photography contest in the high school and then put the photographs on display, maybe even come up with a special wrap around utility boxes or something, but we're working on that part. We also want to include businesses. We've had Home of the Month for a long time, so now we want to have a business, not Business of the Month like the Chamber has. Our businesses are going to be known for keeping our town clean and beautiful. And when they are selected, they will get a sign like this in front of their business, thanking them for keeping our town clean and beautiful. Again, we want to be really positive. And this past week, we selected our first business. It's the mobile gas station at the corner of Lincoln Way and C Street. We noticed their landscaping is really beautiful, their rose bushes and grass is all maintained very well. In addition to that, we want to have neighborhood and community cleanup, and on February 24th, we are going to emphasize Fourth Street, and we're going to have a neighborhood cleanup starting at 10 o'clock, and we're going to meet at the coffee shop there on C Street. Everybody's invited to come out and help us, and we'll have coffee, and I don't know, we may have pizza in the park, too. So it'll start at 10 o'clock. Everyone's invited. We want to keep our town clean and beautiful. Thank you.
No further city, no further public comment. I do have a question regarding, so should that program, if the GALT Beautification Committee is starting a program regarding beautification committee, does it need to come back to the Council? Because when you look at the guidelines, they operate, you know, for the Council? And this would appear to me that we're starting a program in the community that hasn't been approved or discussed by the Council. So does that item need to come back to us?
I'd have to look at the guidelines and, you know, come back to the Council and let you know. I don't know.
Yes, we'd need to check, and we'll check with the staff that is overseeing the Beautification Committee and working with them on that project.
Sounds like a wonderful program, but I just am concerned that we follow the guidelines.
Can I make a comment? It might help your question.
Most of what we're planning to do has actually already been in effect. The neighborhood community thing, we have adopted a street that started back in 2000. We're just bringing it under the title of GALT Looking Good. Again, we want it to be a positive thing. Same with Home of the Month and even Business of the Month. That's done previously.
No, I absolutely agree, Barbara. I think it sounds like a wonderful idea, but when you look at the guidelines that the Beautification Committee operates under, I'm just concerned that these programs aren't being brought before the Council to approve, or at least as an informational item to us, just to make sure that we are operating under the guidelines. If you read the guidelines, they're pretty clear that, you know, the Beautification Committee is to, you know, recommend things to the Council.
That's why I wanted to emphasize that this has been done already in the past. It's not really a new program, just a new title. But I understand your concern.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, reports by city council members, our regional boards, commissions, and committees?
I have two for you. One of them was coming from the Air Quality Board. Kudos to Mr. Arias. They mentioned our grant for the Climate Action Plan. We're one of the few cities who actually got, were given that, which is pretty awesome. On a more important note for the city as far as funding, the SECOG Board met on the 18th of January, and two small amounts of money were approved for the city, one being $901,000 for transportation development. A portion of that will be used for streets and roads and maintenance, the primary portion of it is for transportation. And then the larger of the two is 1.22,000 dollars, which will be used for the operation of our SCT Link program, our buses. And it was unanimously approved, so nice job, sir.
Thank you. Tom?
I've been busy. Let me see, this thing on?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
There you go.
There you go. Let me see, I attended a League of California Mayor's and Council Members Academy, three-day event in Sacramento. Had a great time at the Winter Bird Festival. Tie for everything. Yeah, it's a brick and a bird on it.
It's not a winter bird.
I know it's not a winter bird, but it's a bird. And then I attended my first Public Safety Committee meeting. Thanks, Mark. And I've got some numbers for you, Paige, if you want to, I'll wait for you.
Go for it.
Okay. We discussed all kinds of things, but near and dear to my heart, since I live on the west side of the tracks, and we haven't had a fire station over there since about five years after I moved in. So, you know, a question came up on response time, so we actually had the chief from Consumers Fire there, and he gave us some numbers. And they clocked the average duration of the delays, and it comes out to 2.09, there's two minutes and nine seconds is their average delay by trains. That's what they came up with. And also, the number of citizens on that side of the tracks, it's 28% of GALT's population. And I brought up the comment, I made the comment, and I said, well, Consumers Fire District doesn't just cover the city, okay? It's a district. So it covers more than just the 28% in that side of, over on the other side of tracks. But they have mutual agreements with the other fire departments that can be coming from the other direction, too. So it sounded like it's covered, but it was worth asking the question. And I guess when we get to page...
Tom, you said the average is two-minute wait, but not for everybody. So how many people get delayed, or how many calls?
Nine.
Nine in total? Out of?
Out of 19.
No.
What? Okay. The delay by train, there was seven at 1.52 minutes, that's one and a half minutes. There was three at almost four minutes, and nine at two minutes 89 seconds.
But there was a percentage of calls that got delayed, and it was a very low percentage?
It was, a very low percentage. Let me see, it was...
It's like 2% or something?
Something like that, yeah. It was, I'm reading it here, it's like, I think it's 3.5% total responses.
Mr. Winkler, do you remember from our...
Yeah, we were also pursuing similar questions, and I believe it was fewer than 4% of the total calls.
Yeah, it says 3.5, yeah.
I think it were 19 out of 583 calls.
Something like that, yeah.
And the average delay was probably at or under two minutes.
Delay by train?
Yeah. I believe that's what it is, yeah. So on the surface, it sounds like it could be an issue, but when you dig into the numbers and everything else, it doesn't look like it, which kind of surprised me. Anyhow, I was invited to tour Cardinal Glass, one of our big industrial companies in town. I accepted and thoroughly enjoyed the tour with other council members and staff. Impressive outfit. And then we also had a city strategic planning session, which was agendized on the calendar. So being a council member isn't just two meetings a month.
Thank you. Tom, Kurt?
I don't have anything to add.
Paige?
I attended the Safety Committee meeting also, and we want, along with that wonderful information, we want to encourage our... Hello? I apologize. Encourage our citizens to use the GALT Connect app in reporting things. Do not wait till the safety meeting, and when there's certain things that are already code that you can report. Also, the Youth Commission attended that meeting last night, and they are currently recruiting new members, so if you know of any fantastic youth in this community that would like to make a difference... So if you know any fantastic youth in this community that would like to make a difference and serve, I believe Donna will have the application online. I have a copy of one. So hit those kids up. And what else did we do? All the other meetings were wonderful, so that's it.
So I attended the Red Stripe Blue Star Moms' inauguration dinner. Jean attended with me. It's actually an organization to support moms, some moms in the military, moms and family members in the military supporting our service members, our active service, active duty service members. And they're the first group in this area, before they had to go all the way to Oakdale or up to Sacramento. So it's, they're hoping to serve the Sacram, the Lodi, Elk Grove, and Galt area. So that was great. Friends of the Library, I attended the Friends of the Library meeting, and we presented, along with Public Works, the plans for the expansion of the library and explained that, showed the conceptual plans, and discussed the fact that we currently have the plans, but we have no current funding identified for the, for the expansion. So I also attended the Cardinal Glass tour. I also thought it was wonderful. What a great company to have in our community. They're doing really great, wonderful things. I attended Library Authority. The main thing on the agenda was their marketing plan, and so they've, I've talked with Donna. They've requested that we help them market some of their, their information, that there's more to libraries today than just books, that they offer a whole range of services. And sometimes we just don't do a very good job of getting that information out to the community about all of the things that they do. We had the strategic planning session, and I then had the wonderful opportunity to attend the Historical Society meeting. And for anyone that doesn't know, they have found a 1947 film that is about when the county fair was here, here in Galt. And so I know they're going to, they're planning some opportunities for the community to come out and see the film. It's about 20 minutes long. I was able to share it with the council at the strategic planning meeting. It is...
Fun.
Fun, yeah, to see what the, what the city looked like in 1947 with the fairgrounds and the race track. It was really a wonderful opportunity, so... Yeah, it was really good. It was really good.
It was.
Okay, anything else? So, information consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through five be acted on simultaneously unless the council member requests separate discussion or action.
Minutes of the regular meeting of January 16th, 2018, and special meeting of January 26th, 2018. Receive and file warrants for a period ending January 23rd, 2018. Third item, fiscal year 2017, 2018, second quarter financial review. Item four, California statewide communities development authority property assessed clean energy program. And the last item, five, authorize the city manager to execute amendment number one to the agreement for consulting services with Calendar Associates Landscape Architecture Incorporated for the Fourth Street parking lot and open space improvements project.
I'd like to pull item four for discussion. No, not item four, I'm sorry. Item five. I just had a question. So my question is, is that this, this money is left over from, from the prior, from the prior allocation, correct? I mean...
So let me see if I can articulate clearly this little bit of a convoluted story. So, once upon a time, the city embarked on a C Street, Fourth Street master plan from right outside City Hall here, all the way downtown, all of Fourth Street, including about $2 million worth of redevelopment funding, and, as well as some state and other funding, and SECOG funding. Slowly, RDA funding went away, and then SECOG funding was limited to just select portions of a complete street project. And we had to make some hard decisions last year before we built the current Fourth Street-only portion of the C Street, Fourth Street Complete Streets project. Meanwhile, we were, we've been seeking and advocating for funding to backfill some of those RDA and other city funds that were no longer available for the project. And we secured approval for community development block grant funding through the county. And we get about $150,000 a year, give or take, and they allow us to program one to two years at a time. So we were able to secure funding in the previous two years to design and build the first phase of the parking lot as a change order to the Fourth Street project recently completed. And this would be funding to complete sort of the master, or redesigned master plan for the rest of the open space. Maybe as a quick, brief piece of history, if you could put that slide up. Back before I came to the city, probably back around 2011 or so, the city council was presented sort of a master concept plan for the Fourth Street corridor, as well as the C Street corridor, that had visions for the railroad right-of-way, subject to getting lease agreements with the, with the railroad. And when we were ultimately able to secure a lease with the railroad, they, they nixed a lot of the planned pieces of public improvement. Looks like our graphic isn't going to be able to come up tonight.
Yeah, it's going to come up now.
But there were things like graded amphitheater for, for, for community projects, and we'll see if we can get that just a little bigger. But as you can see, there was going to be a small amphitheater. This is sort of where the current promenade is, with the railroad running to the south of the colored area. And, I'm sorry, to the west of the colored area, bottom of the picture here. We planned to have a gathering space coming off the promenade out in the open space area, a larger parking lot than currently exists. There were grand plans for maybe even a train station, if we could get, get a rail stop or commuter rail, or even now, high-speed rail, you know, could we get a stop in Galt? If so, we need a station. And then have a, sort of a passive space with a rose garden and some other things, you know, and the remainder of the corridor. Well, a lot of restrictions were placed on the open space lease with the railroad that eliminated anything that would attract people into the open space beyond the frontage sidewalks, the parking lot, or the promenade that are currently in process. And so we're going to use this remaining funding to leverage future construction funding for this corridor, but we have to complete redesign efforts from this original concept to the current allowed concept. We'd like to include the community and some of the downtown businesses in, in helping us sort of re-scope the vision for the open space while still meeting the railroad requirements. And so the funding under this amendment would allow us to get to a shovel-ready design that we could put out to bid later this year. And then that would free up additional two years' worth of allocations to actually build a first phase coming out of this master plan.
Okay. So this funding is just for the design process?
That's correct, to get through sort of a re-engaged community process. Bring a presentation to the council and get to shovel-ready plans on a first phase that would sort of try to utilize the $300,000 or so that we would hope to get in the next couple of years from CDPG funding.
Since Fourth Street corridor is on, is in the historic preservation area, could I suggest that we also consult the Historic Preservation Committee?
Absolutely, great idea. Those are the kind of groups who want to come out to our public workshops and provide feedback and input.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
And if we don't use this funding, does that put the future funding at risk?
So currently, what we've been told is they're kind of holding our current year allocation for the current fiscal year and next year's allocation hostage till we expend the existing monies that remain and get to show that we're ready, we're shovel-ready before they'll give us construction.
Yeah, they want to make sure we keep moving on it.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion on this item?
Some of us will move. Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Passes on a 5-0 vote. Do I have a motion on the remainder of the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Moved by, moved by Councilmember Mollson, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Passes on a 5-0 vote. Treasurer's Office? Treasurer's Report?
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. Tonight, before you, you have the treasurer's report for December 2017. As you know, that the Fed has recently raised the federal funds rate, and as such, the city yields and investments have also slowly risen. But I want to address tonight the, where the majority of our city's funds are actually invested, and that is in government agencies. And when I talk about government agencies, I'm talking about the Federal Home Loan Bank, Manny Mae, and Freddie Mac agencies. And what, what I buy in investments are callable, which means that any one of those agencies can call or redeem that, that bond at any point in time, usually on a quarterly basis. But they also, but I also buy what are called step-ups. Those, those are bonds which, as rates increase, then the bond rate will also increase, usually at an annual basis. So it's, it's kind of tricky to know whether it's an annual basis or semi-annual basis, and whether it's quarterly call or semi-annual, annual call or annual call. So that's where the majority of, of the city's funds are invested in. We have approximately, as I said, about 65%, which equates to about $30 million in that. Right now, we're earning 1.59% on, on those callable agencies. As time goes on in 2018, and if, as predicted, you're going to see additional Fed Fund interest rate increases, you're also going to see these bonds step up. So that way, we don't have to buy any new ones. We already have them, and they'll just automatically step. So with that, then, we also have about 14% of the city's funds in the state of California LAF. LAF has been, their interest rate has been slowly rising. It's now about 1.25%. Overall, for the city, in the month of December, we earned 1.44%, which is, honestly, it's the best we've seen in about nine years. So that's, that's good. As far as interest earned, at half of the fiscal year is over, we've earned about $215,000 at this point in, in additional city funds. So with that, I'll ask for your approval. Oh, and one more thing before I do that. Recently, you know, we've all heard and seen about the stock market, okay? I just want to say, and it's my opinion, of course, but don't panic, all right? This is an adjustment that I think was needed, and, you know, don't, don't go out and, and bet on the interest rates at this point. So we're, I think we're good. So with that, I will ask for the city council's approval for the treasurer's report ending December 2017.
Do you have a motion? So moved?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lamson, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Passes on a 5-0 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Culture and Recreation Department, Parks and Recreation Programs, Cost and Fees Study Session, Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we'll be, we'll be providing you a lot of information regarding the Parks and Rec Department. This presentation is to make you aware and prepare you for the upcoming Fee Schedule Report, Budget, and Challenges Facing the Parks and Rec Department. We'll be covering these areas here, the general fund subsidizing the Parks and Recreation, cost allocation of Parks and Recreation, program hard costs versus full burden costs, program fees, park facility needs, rental facility costs and fees, and special events. After each one of these, we will be taking questions. We won't wait till the end. We'll just ask you any questions or jump in anytime you have one. Before we get going on this, I wanted to go over a little bit of our past. As you see the Galt market in its present form and layout since 1989, the Galt market has been the major funding source for the '06 fund, the Parks and Rec Fund, for over 30 years. In 2005, we hit a high of nearly $3.5 million in revenue. But since then, we've taken a small dip down, and now, in the last three years, we went from 2.7 down to nearly 2.5. That doesn't make, mean that the market isn't still a revenue generator. If you look at the orange, you'll see the, our M&amp;O costs. So comparing our revenue to our M&amp;O, we still make nearly $1.5 million just against those two lines. I'm going to be introducing our Finance Director, Emily Boyd, and she will be going over our subsidy of the general, from the general fund and the cost allocation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This first slide shows you graphically the revenues, expenditures, and the subsidy from the general fund for our Parks and Rec programs. Note here that this is all the revenues. This is the Galt market and all of the other programs that the Parks and Rec Department has. That's the classes that they offer, the pool, the aquatic center, the sports events. All of those are included in the Parks and Rec Fund. So all of those items, including the Galt market, are here. You'll see that the revenues have consistently been lower than the expenditures, which means that there has been a net subsidy every year. You see it varies. Some years are greater than others. One thing to take in and note is that we're very fortunate here in Galt that we have the Galt market. It is currently paying about 60% of the expenditures of the other programs. In many cities, you would find that those Parks and Rec programs would only be funded by the general fund to the tune of, you know, the general fund would have to pay that 60% and the programs themselves would only be generating 30% coverage. So we're the other way around, because we are generating from the Galt market a considerable amount of money towards our expenditures. This is the current year budget, and I broke it out by Galt market and other programs. And note that the other programs, again, it includes all of the other programs that I mentioned. The Galt market revenue is projected, this is the budget, to be 2.5 million. The Galt market direct expenses are 1.0 million. The central service cost, and we'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide, are $240,000. That's 23% of the expenditures. And net income is 1.3 million. So that 1.3 million is the, the net income off of the Galt market that's available to fund other Parks and Rec programs. So if we look at the budget for the other programs, revenues are $790,000, change. There's some transfers in, those are landscaping reimbursements from other funds. Other program expense, running those programs costs approximately $2.5 million. And then the central service costs on those other programs is the 23% or roughly 568. Or a net loss on the other programs of 2.2 million.
Emily, one question real quick. So when you talk about the central service costs, the 240,000, that is just for the Galt market, correct?
The 240 is just the Galt market share of central service costs.
And the other then, the other central service cost is on the, all the other programs that Parks and Rec runs?
Correct. The last three lines show the nets. Net Galt market income, 1.3 million. Net other program loss, 2.2. So the amount subsidized by the general fund is 966,000. And once again, I'd impress upon you that that's a much lower percentage subsidy than many other cities, thanks to our Galt market. So regarding central service costs, these are the costs that provide central and administrative type of services. These include human resources, recruiting, retention of employees, financial services, that's payroll, that's accounts payable, that's banking, that's financial reporting, that's all of the things that the Finance Department does. Information technology, that's support for IT devices. Building maintenance, that's facility maintenance on the, the facilities used by Parks and Rec. Central shops... Central shop is the vehicle maintenance for vehicles used by Parks and Rec. Insurance is that share of liability insurance that the Parks and Rec Department needs to have. And then there's other minor administrative costs for some of the management of the council, the manager, the attorney, and so forth. Now, the cost of these, I can go back one slide. If the GALT market had to hire human resources, if they had to hire a finance department, they had to hire somebody to do their payroll and their accounts payable, and if they had to pay their own insurance bills, wouldn't get the efficiencies of economies of scale by having the whole city insurance. They'd probably have to pay more. If they did all of that on their own, it would likely cost them considerably more than two hundred and forty thousand. They gained that economy of scale by having the central services of the city as a whole provide those types of administrative services to them. The twenty-three percent is based on the study that was done last year. And as you know, we changed our study methodology. We moved from a subjective method to an objective method. Subjective method in general is where you look at, you have individuals record time studies of how much time they spent doing what. It becomes less accurate. For example, if we have an accounts payable clerk who's trying to figure out, how much time does she spend writing, processing payments for Parks and Rec as opposed to the Public Works Department or the other department? The number of hours or the minutes that she records for that are not necessarily going to be spot-on. It's going to be her estimate of what she did. So that's why the subjective method is not necessarily the most efficient way to do it. An objective method bases the allocation upon statistics that can be measured. How many accounts payable checks were written in total through the year? How many city council agenda items were brought forward? How many full-time equivalents are there? And then that's one of the measurements for determining how much of HR each program gets. Parks and Rec, by nature of how it does business with a lot of seasonal employees, tends to use more HR services than perhaps the Finance Department that's a little more stable. Technology devices. How many devices are being supported in each of these departments? If we have thirteen or fourteen computers in Finance, but we have, you know, thirty-seven or forty over in PD, it's going to take more support to support PD than it's going to take to support Finance. So you look at those numbers, and you see, how much did it cost us for information technology? And who was getting supported, and what is their share of that total cost? So beginning in fiscal seventeen eighteen, we moved to an objective cost allocation methodology. And I'm not going to belabor the point here, because we've talked about this many times already. But we bring it up so that you can see, as Armando moves through his presentation on the cost of various programs, you'll see that you have two types generally, two types of costs. One of your is your operations, your hard, direct costs, directly related. Buy things for the pool or for the sports fields, that's a directly related cost. Or the employees that directly work at the pool, those are direct costs. And then the other one is the central service costs, which are more indirect. They're the types of administrative costs that I've just been talking about. So, any questions on that?
Questions?
If not, I will turn it back over to Mr. Solis.
So in this section, we'll be discussing, is that working? In this section, we'll be discussing our rec programs and our fees. I'd like to introduce our Recreation Supervisor, Monica Lopez, and she'll go over exactly how we calculate that and explain the programs.
Okay, so this is kind of hard to see. This kind of goes along with the packet that you have, our Good Evening Mayor and City Council. If you turn to the second page, which is what is up on the screen right now, it'll show that, an example of the seventh and eighth grade boys' basketball program. So we've gone through, this packet has all of our programs, but we just picked this one as an example. So if we're looking at the top, we're looking at our hard costs. Staffing and soft costs, staffing is directly related to that program. The soft cost is administration, maintenance, and things that support the program. The very first column are the job duties. So those are things that the people are doing, the daily site duties, daily program supervision, trials and drafts, things that need to happen for that program to run properly.
Before she goes further, can I just explain? That binder that you're provided has all of our programs in there. And what she's going to do, she's explaining to you how to read these programs so you can understand what the true costs are. So that's the meaning of what we're doing now, going over what the sheet means, and so you can understand it when you take your time to read it. So I'm sorry.
So the second column are the positions. So those are the positions that do those job duties. So rec worker one, sports coordinator, scorekeepers, et cetera. And then the soft cost, we have the rec coordinator, our office assistants, and park maintenance workers. The third column area is a little bit more specific. So like, at the top is the rec worker. That's how many hours we're estimating that they're going to work each week during the duration of that program. Sports coordinator, the officials. And then if you look, a lot of our officials in trials and drafts are specific to that age group, the fourth and eighth grade and up. Related to that is the hours per week total. The next column is the number of weeks that we estimate that the program will run. Eleven weeks is the program. If you're looking at the ones that say one, those are just for the draft. And then down below, the general stuff that we do in the office, putting programs and things on the website, updating the information. Here are the totals, multiplying out the number of hours by the number of weeks. And the rate, so the rate is their hourly rate plus any of the workers' comp, any insurance, PERS, if they're PERS employees, anything associated with that position. And then the last column is the total employee costs. There, that's highlighted there is the hard cost for the employees that are directly working with the program. The blue is the soft cost with the support staff, maintenance, and office staff. Yellow is the full staffing total for that program. Next, we have the M and O, the expenditures for that program. The first column shows examples of what we need for that program. Balls for practices, balls for games, the sticky pads for stage kits, et cetera. The next column kind of explains the breakdown of what we're looking at. Two balls per team at eight dollars each, sixteen dollars per team, about seven teams. The next column, seven teams times the sixteen. And then you have the total, all the way to the right. Here are the M and O, the expenditure totals, the hard costs. And here we have the subtotal with the staffing plus the M and O or expenditures.
I just have a quick question. Where's the M and the O costs? I mean, like, the M, like, in the maintenance of the facilities?
Maintenance and operations, it's just how it's titled in the.
I know, but I don't see any maintenance here for the facility.
No, there are no maintenance included into that.
Okay, so it's not included in this?
No.
I didn't think so.
A lot of our facilities are not our facilities. So especially with the seventh grade, fourth grade, and up. First grade and some of our second and third are at Chabola, but the rest are actually at the elementary school or the high school district sites. The total expenditure cost there in blue would be everything added together. Here's the revenue. Typically, the revenue estimates are, we look back three years and average out. So this one for the boys, we've averaged it out, and estimated it at seventy participants. Profit and loss is down at the bottom. Here, we show a loss of seventy-two hundred dollars, almost seventy-three. If you look in the middle, the cost of the, current cost of the program per participant, seventy dollars. The hard cost here does not include the central cost. So this is just the hard cost with the staffing, and then the M and O. If you add in the twenty-three percent, this is the total cost of the program per participant. The next page in your packet is kind of a general overview, if you want to look at what we've done for each of the programs.
Monica, excuse me.
Sorry.
So when you say current cost of program per participant, is that the price?
That's currently what participants are charged for the program.
That they're charged, okay. Because the cost of the program would be all three of those.
It's the current, what we currently charge participants to participate.
So we charge seventy dollars, but roughly speaking, it's like three hundred and ten dollars?
No, you wouldn't. Can you go back to a couple of slides, Monica? One, a couple more. Right here. So if you see the subtotal, that is the cost of, without the twenty-three percent cost allocation.
The red.
The yellow would be if you added that in, and then a total of the expenditures. Now, go ahead and move forward, Monica. So that's the cost of the program. This is the hard cost without the twenty-three percent included in it. This would be the cost if you add that twenty-three percent into it. So in theory, we would have to recover hard costs. We'd have to charge a hundred and forty-one dollars for that program. You wanted it to recover the twenty-three percent cost allocation part of it, we would have to charge a hundred and seventy-two dollars for that. It sounds out of line, and this is for one specific program. What, the more kids that participate in the program, the cheaper it would be. Because if I have eight kids versus ten, those two extra are just revenue, because all the costs are still the same, except for a T-shirt. Now, on this next slide that Monica started showing is, we wanted to compare what Elk Grove and Lodi are doing with these similar programs. So go ahead, Monica.
Okay, so if you, like he said, we're comparing Elk Grove and Lodi in the first two columns, except for the GALT Gators, we chose to compare it with Laguna instead of Lodi, because Lodi does like an inner-city, where they compete amongst themselves. So that's why, that's the only one we used a different city or a different location. So the first column is Elk Grove, which is Kasumnus, CSD. The second column is Lodi, current rate that we're charging. The cost recovery rate, which, if you go back to the individual sheets, it just carried over to this. And then the full burden includes the twenty-three percent. So this just kind of gives you an overview, if you want to look at it. If you, there's a couple that don't include the cost recovery rate and the full cost burden. City tots, for example, as well as lap swim and public swim. It's a little harder to separate those out, because it's the same facility, and it's kind of hard with averages and stuff. But we do, we are able to show the comparison from the two other areas, as well as our cost. Are there any questions?
So this information was just given to you so you can kind of look at all the programs. And when you're reading it, you can kind of understand where we were going with it. All of our recreation programs are in that binder there. And we will be coming back with the fee schedule and with our recommendations for that.
I understand that some cities, because no city can pay a hundred percent for Parks and Rec, and a lot of cities our size don't have a Parks and Rec, because they haven't got a market. Or if they do have a Parks and Rec, it's one swimming pool or a softball complex, but not both. So a lot of those cities, though, they have a policy of what percentage they would like to recuperate, whether it's twenty-five percent, or, you know, you do the flip side, how much they want to, you know, reimburse out of the General Fund, because that's where it comes from. And they have some kind of a percentage, twenty-five, seventy-five. I'm just wondering, are you consistent? You know, how do you come up with the number of seventy dollars per participant, but if you want full cost recovery, it's a hundred and seventy-six?
In the past, it was a discussion with the city manager. What we would do is we would see what we believe the market would bear, and that's how the decision was made.
Okay, and it makes sense that you have some thought involved into it. But we could also move toward policies on what we would, a target of what we would like to recoup in our, you know, twenty-five percent, fifty percent. How much do we want to, you know, subsidize, basically?
Yes, we'd be glad to take the direction of the council, if you'd like us to meet a certain percentage of either hard cost or full burden cost.
Well, some cities, I found, actually, leaving it up to Parks and Rec is recommending those percentages.
And that's what we'll be doing when we go into the fee schedule report that's coming in about, in March, that we'll be providing some recommendations for these fees. And then if they're in line with what council is thinking, we'll prove, or you can.
Yeah, because I think you almost have to look at it both ways. You know, what percentage do you want to subsidize versus how much the market can bear versus how much other cities in the region charge?
Right.
There's a lot that goes into it, it's not just one.
The only issue with that, if we charged a hundred and seventy dollars to recoup our cost for boys' basketball, we wouldn't have a boys' basketball program. So it really depends on how, you know, what, how close you wanted to get.
Yeah.
And what, and that's why we put that last chart up, so you can see what Lodi and Elk Grove are charging.
Exactly.
So you can kind of get a guess of, you know, our one program, they were charging a hundred and fifteen, and we were charging fifty-five. You know, so there's, you know, just the comparison.
So, Armando, do we charge the same rate for city residents versus county residents?
Yes, we do. We, City Council approved removing the out-of-resident fee as that this is more of a community versus a city, where the people from Harold Wilton, they come to our schools, they come into our town, they're here, and they participate in the programs.
Because Lodi and Elk Grove both have a rate for non-residents of their cities.
Yes.
They have an out-of, they have a county rate or a non-resident rate. If I was living in GALT and I wanted to participate in a program in Lodi, I'd pay the non-resident rate, not the city, not the city rate. I mean, my question is, because, as we know, the General Fund is funded seventy percent by property taxes, paid by residents that live within the city of GALT. The other thirty percent are other revenues, including sales tax being part of that, which are probably paid by everybody in the region, if they, if everybody shops within town. But, you know, the fact that seventy, I mean, I think we're able to do that because of the GALT market, but in reality, you can always say that the residents that live in the city limits are carrying the largest burden in regards to the cost of Parks and Recreation Program.
Well, and we used to have three rates. We had in the high school district, and then we had outside the high school district for the non-resident rate.
Excuse me, you have three rates?
No, when we used to have, we used to have the resident, and then we had two non-resident rates, inside the high school district and outside.
For comparison purposes, can you provide that information as to what the out-of-resident fee is for Elk Grove and Lodi for these various programs? Is that available to you?
Sure.
Okay.
Do we also, would we, would we be able to tell? Because I know a lot of people that don't live within the city still have GALT. I mean, if you look at their address, it says GALT. I guess I'd like, in evaluating that, be able to see how many out-of residents, out-of-city resident people are utilizing our Parks and Rec programs? I mean, how many non-residents do we have if we're just talking about residents within the city? Is there a way, do you think, to be able to tell that?
I'm going to ask our program specialist over there, if we can.
We used to have a map that we got from Public Works that would show city residents versus in the high school district with a GALT address.
Oh, so you would check the address at the.
Well, if we weren't one, if we weren't familiar with the address.
Any further questions?
No, that was a good question, because, you know, as a taxpayer of the city, a question comes up, how much do we subsidize the county residents? It may be worth it. I don't know.
Yeah, and I think you always need to, you know, you can say, well, the county residents shop here, but we get one percent on sales tax. We don't get the eight and a half percent, or eight and three quarters percent that's being paid. We get one percent, and that's if they're shopping within our community. So it's a very small amount of revenue as compared to what most of our, most of our operating budget comes on out of property taxes, which are paid by the residents. Okay.
So I would encourage the council to take a look at this packet, go through it. If you have questions, give Armando or Monica or myself a call. Come into the office, sit down, and walk you through, you know, the different programs.
So in this packet, you did that for every program that Parks and Rec?
Yes, yes. No, those are just our recreation programs, not special interests. So this is a picture of Walker Park. It's our newest park. And when I say newest park, it's seven years old. In this section, we'll be discussing the condition of our park facilities. We rate our parks and our amenities in the parks in four sections. Four, which means that we have to constantly do repairs within twelve months, or, you know, schedule the repair fair. Twelve to eighteen, good. Eighteen to sixteen months. And then excellent, having to deal with them within thirty-six to sixty months, I believe that says. I don't have my glasses. And then excellent, uh, having to deal with them within thirty-six to sixty months, I believe that says. I don't have my glasses. Um, we're gonna be focusing today on these two here. Here's a map of our park system, and what I did is I outlined them in our L and Ls. People have this, are, believe that parks are parks and Parks and Rec should be taking and funding all of these parks. This, uh, peach color outline is, uh, our lighting and landscaping District Thirty-two. You can see which parks fall in there. The red is our, uh, L and L Thirty-three, and our blue is Thirty-seven. We're gonna focus, uh, our majority of our discussion on our sports, uh, facilities as tho- those are the most commonly used, uh, facilities.
Armando, the ones that are circled in black are not in a L and L?
I'm sorry, no. And anything that is not circled is considered Parks and Recreation Oh-six. They are funded out of the Parks and Recreation Fund.
So all the black circled ones, or?
Anything that's not in the colored square.
Anything not in the colors?
So, so everything here is Oh-six.
Everything?
All of these other ones live in...
Like the aquatic center and the sports complex?
Right. Those are all Oh-six.
Okay. So like up at Walker Park, it has a black circle around it? That's just, well, but it's in, but it's in the blue square, so it's L and L?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll, we'll be talking about the Shebolus Gate Park, our community park.
Oh, that's just black.
Our Gora Aquatic Center, uh, Greer Basin, Harvey Park, Meadowview Park, Northeast Sports Complex, also known as McCaffrey, uh, Sports Complex, Veterans Field, and Walker Park. At this time, I'd like to bring up our park supervisor, Armando Morales, and he'll be going over the, the maintenance issues and problems that we're having in our parks.
I gotta lower the microphone. Got any mayor and council members? We'll be discussing the issues that we're having at, uh, first, it'll be the, uh, skate park. There's our skate park.
You know, I was involved with the skate park when we put it in and all that, all those skate park amenities were all, you know, off-the-shelf purchases to see how it worked. And here we are.
They were beautiful back, uh, twelve years ago, twelve, fifteen years ago.
Yeah. And we did it intentionally that way, rather than put permanent concrete ones in and stuff like that.
Yeah. So, these ramps are approximately twelve to fifteen years old. Um, staff spent about an average of a hundred and eighty man-hours maintaining these ramps. Uh, these ramps are aging, um, they're getting vandalized. Uh, it's very difficult for staff to find replacement parts for them. And I, you can't really see, but they're showing wear and tear.
Armando, is that a hundred and eighty hours annually?
Annually. And, um, so to pretty much keep maintaining these ramps, it'll cost approximately six thousand six hundred, just to maintain them, um, per year.
How busy is that skate park?
It's on and off. It depends. Depends.
It, it really is being utilized. Um, before we left, there was probably about twenty kids out there. It, even when it's locked, it's utilized. It'll jump the fence. So...
That was Walker Park, but don't tell anybody.
So we're moving on to the, uh, community park. It, it's beautiful. It's an area shot. It looks very beautiful. Um, here you see the tennis courts. We have, um, it's a wind nets that are showing wear and tear. Not only helps the wind, it also helps for sun for tennis players. Um, they're starting to show wear and tear in multiple areas. Uh, the cost approximately is ten thousand to replace them. We have, I'm not sure if you can see it, because I can't, I don't have my glasses on, but there's a crack. And there's a crack, and to resurface these tennis courts, um, it, it'll cost approximately forty-five thousand. Multiple courts. That's three courts.
It'll be approximately nine thousand dollars per court, five courts.
Now, we're, uh, in the baseball field at the community park. This is the warning track. We actually have a, uh, a six-inch grass slip. Um, we will need to sod cut and replace. That would be in-house. And it approximately costs six thousand six hundred for staff to do. Moving on to where the bleachers are at, for the, uh, baseball field. We currently have, um, trees that are raising up the sidewalks in multiple areas. A temporary, temporary solution would be to grind the concrete at a cost of approximately five hundred, depending on the area. That, and that's just a temporary solution. And there, there's a tree that's overgrowing the actual planter box. There's another tree.
And when grinding only works if the, uh, differentials, what, less than an inch or something like that?
Correct.
Yes, the, the long-term solution's gonna be that we'd have to deal with those trees and, and the pavement.
So now moving on to the, uh, pavilion. This pavilion is rented by many patrons. They have, um, I've seen weddings out there, I've seen birthday parties. Um, it looks beautiful here. Uh, when you get close to it, you see rust issues. Um, if we don't take care of the rust issues, it'll spread. Um, roughly cost to do it in-house, approximately four thousand dollars to repaint, remove this, uh, rust. And rust is caused by the moisture.
And be, before we move on to that next park, uh, I'd like to also say that we were currently replacing our, uh, large play, playground at Community Park at a cost of approx, approximately about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's not in there. It's already funded. But, uh, make you aware that, that would have been in that, in this budget if it hadn't been, uh, taken care of already.
How old is that park? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
How old is that park?
I would say it's probably close to twenty years old.
So you also, when you replace the play equipment, are you going to replace the sand also?
Yes, we will be removing...
The other kind of surface and half's...
Right, we will be removing it and putting in the engineered chips.
I was there the other day and lots of weeds.
Yeah.
Lots of weeds in the sand.
Yeah, we're hoping within the next couple of months to start, uh, taking down the old structure and then taking out the sand.
And by replacing the sand, the engineer wood fibers, it's actually ADA compliant. So now we're gonna move on to the aquatic center. Beautiful, uh, place, aerial shot. Here we have three heaters, which two are, two heat the competition pool and one heats the recreation pool. Uh, these heaters are approximately twenty years old. Uh, we have issues. Um, let me start by kind of giving you an example, like a barbecue pit. Normally, you show wear and tear, rust, because of flames and stuff like that. That's actually what's happening to the heaters. So we would need to re- replace those heaters at approximately a cost of sixty thousand. Moving on to the, uh, filter system, ones for the competition pool and the other ones for the rec pool. Uh, these filters leak. They, uh, have multiple issues. They're approximately twenty years old. Um, we have issues with them, so they would need to be replaced, um, at a cost of forty-five thousand five hundred.
Armando, is that both? Or is that per?
Correct, for both.
Can you go over the life expectancy for both of those?
Oh, and life expectancy, thanks. Life expectancies for both would be ten, so we're over double.
The life expectancy on the pool heaters, ten years?
Ten years.
We're at twenty?
Pool heaters and filters. We're at twenty. So we got double of a...
Yeah, and you know, part of the, part of the, um, hit that you take with the budget is they were all put in at the same time.
Correct.
You know, if you could replace one every couple of years, do the math, you know?
Moving on to the, oop, let me back up. I wasn't sho- I wasn't gonna show you that number yet. The, uh, chlorine system, that's the, uh, liquid chlorine. Um, not sure if some of you are aware of it, but liquid chlorine damages plastic and it just, it's wear and tear on it. Um, we need to replace these. Uh, staff is constantly working on these, uh, pumps, tanks, um, and to replace it with tablets. It's a cost of fifteen thousand.
Uh, I, there are probably better systems out there now, more cost-effective, maintenance, everything else than, than using chlorine, which is...
Especially liquid.
Yes, yes, which is a hazmat issue too.
Correct, correct.
We don't have any solar system out there or anything. I mean, we're heating strictly from electricity?
Uh, yeah, yeah, electricity and gas, yeah. Natural gas, yeah. So here you see the, uh, probes actually read the chlorine and the pH on the aquatic centers for both. We're, we're having issues. Uh, we're, hopefully we'll make it one more year, but these are on their last leg. Life expectancy was, again, it's ten years. We're way over that. Um, to replace those, it's a cost of fourteen thousand seven hundred. And I'm not sure if you can see it, but underneath those metal grates, you'll see motors and, uh, pumps. There's three altogether. Um, staff is actually recommending, um, we're replacing these motors every three years. So there's actually wear and tear on the motors. They continually, continuously run. Uh, we are recommending to put a VFD, which is a vari- variable frequency drive, to reduce energy consumption and to save some of these motors. In order to do that, the cost would be twenty-three thousand six hundred. And here we have the emergency gate that comes from the aquatic center into the skate park. This gate is used for fire emergency secondary exit. Um, staff has spent a lot of time repairing this gate. Um, it's time for some upgrades to that, panic hardware, whatever you, um, hinges, stuff like that. So the cost would be to repair is two thousand.
Repair or replace.
And, and this is a beautiful picture, but that isn't our main concern. The recreation pool, which is the kiddie pool, is our main concern. We have a leak that has gone undetected, and we have a big issue there. We don't have a cost at it, at this time. And that's why I have a, well, that's why we have a question mark there, because we don't know the cost of it.
We, we haven't been able to isolate where the leak is. We are aware that there is one.
We know it's leaking.
Yes, we do know it's leaking. Public Works has provided us with the report, um, letting us know that there's a continuous leak in there. And, um, the problem is, we weren't, we're not able to find it. We had one in the competition pool, I believe, three or four years ago, and it took us, uh, quite a while to find that one. And then, um, it was ten feet deep, steep, approximately ten feet deep. Um, and we were just lucky to find it at that point. So we'll, we're gonna be investigating this further, trying to figure out what the cost will be to repair this leak.
So when you say a leak, it's like possibly something underground or?
It could be under the pool, could be under the sidewalk. It could, we're, we're trying to figure it out. We actually had a company out here, um, recently trying to find the leak for us, and they couldn't find it either.
So you're talking a waterline leak then?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not the integrity of the pool itself, or you don't know?
We don't know. We, it could be plaster issues. We, we don't know.
So is that about a hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand just on the pool?
Yeah.
Okay.
So now, uh, we're gonna move on to Greer Basin Park. Here is the, uh, playground. Um, this playground is about fifteen plus years. The life expectancy on a playground is roughly ten years. Um, they no longer make parts for this playground. We, uh, been removing slides and have not been replacing them because there's, they don't make any parts for this type of, uh, playground anymore. As you can see, there's some issues there, and they no longer make that. That slide is no longer there. Um, then a cost to replace the playground is seventy-eight thousand.
So, so what you're gonna see is a common theme with our play structures. Uh, we had a couple of reps from Miracle come out and meet with us and trying to get replacement parts. They no longer support a majority of our parks', uh, playground systems. So we can't even order a part to repair it. So as these continue to break down, we'll just have to shut down sections until we replace the whole playground system. So...
Break down or vandalized.
Break down or vandalize. As we get into later parks, you'll see some vandalism to some of these parks. So just to give you a, a rough estimate for a, a, a playground that size, it's about a seventy-eight thousand dollar price tag. And you'll see, uh, higher prices for the larger parks and, uh, lower prices for some of the smaller ones. But it, um, we're gonna have to just shut the playground down unless we replace it.
Yeah, that was my question, is if, if we're taking away parts that are vandalized or, or broken, and we can't replace them, at some point, the playground structure, structure integrity is affected, isn't it? Or, or the safety of the playground equipment? I mean, because...
There, there is. But, but I can tell you that we have our, every, I believe, every one but one, our newest hire, are playground certified inspectors. So they have, they're, they are certified. They do go out and, and verify that the playgrounds are still safe in the current condition.
And just to give you an idea, all the, uh, if you see a park with square posts, they don't make parts for those playgrounds anymore. So the square post is what you don't wanna see. We're moving on to Harvey Park. Well, Harvey Park is the actual home of the Galt Youth Baseball. Um, we recently, the city received a hundred and eighty-two thousand. We added a new playground, a restroom, a community garden. And, uh, Galt Youth Baseball has made upgrades to the baseball field. Um, they've been very helpful. Without them, they, I don't think that field would be playable. So, um, we, at this point, we, uh, rate this facility in good condition.
And, and that was that hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar grant from, um, the housing, uh, that we received. We were able to make upgrades to the restrooms, the, we added a playground structure. Uh, G Y B was helpful in helping, um, improve the baseball park area. We installed the community garden. So that facility was upgraded for about a hundred and eighty-two thousand to where we, there really are no major issues at that park, except vandalism. We continually dealing with that.
And didn't we lose a tree last year?
Uh, partial, yeah.
But, so, Galt Youth Baseball?
Yes.
They helping maintain that park? They kind of adopted it?
The baseball field, correct.
They, they do a tremendous job in, in maintaining that park. They, they really do put their own, uh, organization's money into it and the, the sweat into it, so...
In the information I gathered from, uh, the gentleman that takes care of it, which, which is Jason, he spends about ten thousand dollars average total between Harvey and Meadowview, just to maintain it and keep it playable.
Wonderful.
So now we're moving on to Meadowview Park. Meadowview Park has two baseball fields. Um, before I go any further, let me just kind of give you a little history on this pa- uh, baseball field. This park was not intended for baseball usage as we currently are doing, so this park was just for practice. Uh, so basically, they became baseball fields, so there was no upgrades, no nothing done to this park. Um, and once again, this is the home of the, uh, Galt Youth Baseball. They help out once again, maintain these facilities. Um, here you see, there's drainage issues, uh, due to sprinklers overlapping. And going back to that, what I was talking about, it wasn't intended for baseball fields. Um, moving on, we don't have a price for that because, you know, the, the ground's not graded correctly. It wasn't intended for baseball as we're using it now.
No, we used to practice softball.
Yes, mm-hmm. So moving on to the, uh, shade structure. This shade structure, as you can see, um, they're missing one-by-ones on top. Uh, you can't see on the picture, but some of the support beams are rotted. Um, staff is... Staff is recommending to fix it at a approximately cost of five thousand dollars. And the wood you see there is pine. We're recommending to replace it with redwood, and that would be Mr. Winkler's team.
Raise the price.
At approximately five thousand.
The pine is deteriorating, is that what?
Yeah, it's, it's rotting, because pine doesn't last that long. We never, never treated it, we never, it's just had paint over it, so it's actually rotting. It's, it's time, it's, it's given us a life cycle, pretty much. Moving on to the restroom building. This building, we have issues when we have tournaments, baseball tournaments. We have issues with the sewer backing up, and it's constantly. We have to call the wonderful Department of Public Works out to assist us. Staff is actually, it's, we're thinking that the reason why this happens is because the sewer line is uphill. So it's not gravity, so it's something, something major that we have to address.
Talking Meadowview, yeah.
Yeah, you know what I'm talking about. So we are actually recommending to put a pump to help with this issue. At approximately a cost of eighteen thousand. And that's the, inside of the restroom, there's been no upgrades. For a long time, I'm thinking over twelve, fifteen years. Partitions are rusting, toilets are residential toilets with tanks. It's not a commercial with the slone valve. We have many issues with these restrooms. We are appro- to replace all this, it'd be a cost of approximately twelve thousand dollars.
That would be for both restrooms.
And they have to be ADA, right?
Yes.
Correct.
So Meadowview's an example of a park that has no lighting and landscape district. It's being funded solely out of the O six fund to pay for its maintenance upgrades or any structures.
Correct.
Unlike areas that, a community park that does have some lighting and landscape.
Community park is also funded by O six. The, there's percentage broken into how much O six will pay and the L and L will pay, because it is a community park, and it benefits the whole city.
So, moving forward, our playground. Good news, we have round poster, however, they don't, they're starting to slowly take out some of the slides, we, I mean, we're, they don't, they no longer make parts for some of the slides, so they're, they're obsolete.
But the posts are okay.
But the posts are okay.
How old is that park?
Uh, that's probably about eighteen years old. And that's probably one of, the playground is.
Playground.
That's probably one of our newest playgrounds too, well, besides Walker.
Yeah, park's been there a lot longer than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the park has been there about fifty-three years.
Yeah, I meant the structure.
Yeah, well, back in ninety-five, when I first started, I actually helped with the playground in, so I was young back then.
I'm surprised he's been here that long.
At a cost, at approximate cost to replace the playground is seventy-eight thousand.
Includes the posts?
So this is the McCaffrey, that's the northeast sports complex. Looks beautiful from the aerial shot. We share this with the school district. There's multiple sports played out there. There's baseball, there's soccer, school district uses it. The lawn looks beautiful, but when you get close, you see the patchy grass. We can't repair this, because there's no downtime, district uses it daily. And it's impossible to grow seed on that turf with the usage. Now you see another picture of it? We don't have a, approximate price, we've, there's no way to tell how much it would cost to replace this.
And, and a few years ago, we did an attempt to try and rehabilitate some of the sections. We had trespassing on there, we just couldn't keep the people off to try and do the repair. And it, with the growing season in spring and, and fall, it just, it's used too much to, to try and rehabilitate that property at this point. So we, we, we're not putting a price tag on it, but we wanted to make you aware of what, what it looks like.
Does the school district chip in any, or is it all on us?
It is all on us, it is, it is our, our maintenance, we take care of the maintenance of that facility.
That's part of the agreement with the school districts and our sharing facilities.
Correct, about two or three years ago, we signed a new agreement that we would take over the maintenance of that facility.
Isn't that piece actually a carved out section of like five acres or something?
The, there, there's certain part that they own and we own, if that's, is that what you're talking about? Yeah, yeah, you can actually find the map where we've actually purchased, what piece of the property we actually purchased and what the school district did.
Does the, does the, does the playfield go beyond the, the boundaries of the, whatever is city property?
Yes, yeah, it, it's, so that five, that five acres you're talking about is towards the back.
Right.
And then the school district has the front, but we're responsible from the sidewalk all the way back now, through that agreement that we signed a couple of years ago.
Does that include, do we pay for the watering of it?
I believe we do, yes.
We do.
Could you, could you go back to where the field was actually?
That part?
No, one more.
There you go.
In the pictures of the lawn, so the, the, the area inside the red, red line, that is what the lawn looks like on those other pictures?
Yes.
And the part by this is usually dead, so this must be a spring foot.
So, so this next picture, go to the next picture. I took this picture, and then I took these next two pictures as a close-up. Click it twice. That's what it looks up, looks like when you look close. As you're driving by or you're walking by, it looks like it's a great facility, it looks like it, you know, I wanna go out there and play ball. But as you get closer, you, you can see what it really looks like.
So how long would it take to reseed it, like if you wanna do it in the spring?
Approximately month and a half.
Okay, 'cause I know the high school district will kick everybody off the football field with yellow, big yellow fences and things, and-
Yeah, we, we tried that, and they, Public Works was actually in charge of Parks and Rec at that point. And I believe they had a tournament out there without notifying anybody.
Who did?
I, do you, did we find out who that was?
My recommendation, my recollection is that we spent about twenty thousand dollars about three years ago, doing a rehabilitation of this field. And then we came back after a weekend, and they, about a month in, and they'd torn it all up. And we, we were obviously upset and tried to find out what happened. And there was a lot of finger pointing, but apparently an unauthorized tournament that the school thought we'd authorized, and we didn't know anything about it, and we didn't authorize it. And so basically, kind of a black market tournament wasted about twenty thousand dollars worth of rehab.
Wow, frustrating.
So now we're moving to the sports complex. Sports complex is utilized by various sports groups. It's highly utilized. Here you see the restrooms. This actually, this complex has approximately twenty years plus. No upgrades have been done. The only upgrade that was done, that I can recall, was maybe about approximately ten years ago, was the floor. Slone valves are old, they're leaking. Partitions, rusting, old, and pretty much needs an upgrade. Approximately cost for that, twelve thousand. That's for both restrooms, men and women. This is a table that was donated from C D C approximately twenty years ago. They're an eyesore, they're, some of them are starting to show some wear and tear. To replace these, we would, at approximately a cost of a thousand dollars each.
Each. How many are there? Probably about twenty to replace all of them.
Here is the batting cage, the netting, it's weathered, has holes. It's showing wear and tear. Approximately price to replace those would be two thousand, two hundred, and that'd be two of them. You can't really tell in this picture, but the fence, there is actually bent, damaged, that's due to balls, players, you name it. We don't have a price for that, because we don't know how, how much it would cost and how much of it is damaged. But just making you guys aware that it, there, there is some damage there. Here we have a drainage issue on one of the fields. Majority of the fields have drainage issues, and that is because the soil is clay. We have irrigation issues also. So basically, if you guys see yellow spots in the summertime, and somebody asks us to water that area, we can't, because if we water that area, the park also gets watered with that same station. So basically, you're watering the yellow spots extra, but you're also watering an area somewhere in the park. Extra watering, so it's, the irrigation is not ideal. At a cost of, to put drainage, at approximately a cost of forty thousand to repair, replace, whatever.
That's the sprinklers.
The sprinklers, yeah.
Irrigation, not the drainage.
Not the drainage, just the sprinklers.
That would be to separate and put them on different controllers, so we could actually keep the sports fields a little greener without having to flood the park areas.
I don't know why they did that, but they, somehow they did that.
Well, it was put in by low bid in back before meters.
Right.
How long ago was the sports complex built?
The sports complex is over thirty years old. It was actually built before the market was paved. So it, and then I started here thirty years ago, and I remember seeing that there already when I came in.
It was about nineteen eighty-six, I think.
Yeah.
So in this picture, I don't know if you can see it, but there's a bunch of cracks on the concrete. That's not a concern, we just kinda wanted to show you guys that it's throughout the whole facility, that this cement's cracking. That could be from true re- tree roots. Here we have a planter box, the trees actually are growing the planter box and now causing issues. I don't know if you can see it, but in the corner, the bricks are starting to pop out. So we're recommending to remove these tree, uh, planter boxes to avoid further damage to the concrete.
We've repaired those planter boxes in the past. We're looking just to, to remove them at this point. See exactly what's, what's under there, and then take appropriate action from there.
Is everybody gonna sit?
I, exactly, or where are the kids gonna climb on, huh?
Yeah.
But is, I assume that, make the assumption, that part of the problem is because when those trees were planted, it was before they had-
Yeah, correct.
-the requirements of the barriers and everything that's kind of stops them. I mean, trees planted today are planted much differently than-
Correct.
-those trees would have been planted even ten years ago.
And before we move on to the next park, I just wanna let you know that we've made a conscious decision to become a premier sports area, a destination for our tournaments. And this is one of our highly used facilities for our tournaments on the weekends. So, you know, we, we need to, you know, people want clean restrooms, people, you know, wanna be able to come to a facility that, we, we wanna be that destination, and we actually have to put some money back into this facility that's thirty-plus years old, so.
Moving on to Veterans Field. This facility is used for soccer. We actually have a synthetic grass area in front of the goes. The problem with this is, it was a great idea, however, we have a lip now where the synthetic and the natural turf meet. And to repair this, it's at a, at a cost at approximately two thousand dollars in-house for staff to do. Here we have the walkway that goes from the restrooms to the bleachers. We have a pouring place material, it's showing wear and tear. As you can see, there's some issues there. Staff is recommending to re-move it, remove the pouring place, and replace it with decomposed granite. And then at a cost that, a cost approximately four thousand, and that would be staff, for staff to do. It'd be in-house project. Now moving on to Walker Park. So this park is actually utilized by various groups. It, it has two natural turf soccer fields and a synthetic field. This park is one of our newest parks, and newest meaning it's seven or eight years old. It's highly used, and it also, it's highly vandalized. Here we have the playground. It's already showing wear and tear on the pouring place, and to repair or replace the pouring place, it, it's a cost of approximately ten thousand dollars. There's a sign there that says the slide was vandalized, we're repairing the slide. Here's the slide. We were fortunate enough to repair the slide, the piece was under warranty, but as soon as the warranty's over, the price to replace that piece would be a thousand, eight hundred.
Do you think that it's vandalized more because it's not really in a neighborhood? I mean, it's, it's adjacent to a neighborhood, but it's kind of surrounded by country roads, and it's, when you pull in the parking lot, it's kinda hidden back there.
I'm, I'm sure it contributes to it, you know, nobody out there keeping an eye on their neighborhood park.
But every time I'm in it, I mean, I, I do think P D does a lot of drive-throughs of it. I mean, I, there are a lot when they drive through. And it does have some security cameras.
Yeah, so it was just common sense too, there's one table that's burned up because somebody used a portable barbecue right next to one that was made there, I don't understa- I don't understand that. Makes no sense to me.
So here you see the fencing around the synthetic field. You can see the board there, that was a temporary fix. They've been vandalizing it, they continue to vandalize it. Staff has been repairing as they vandalize. And staff has, you can see in the top picture where the vandalism is.
That's the fence around the-
Synthetic.
The synthetic, yeah. Yeah, 'cause they're always playing on it, locked, unlocked, it doesn't matter, they climb over, they kick their way through, whatever, they're playing on it.
And that's what these pictures are showing, is that they've kicked out that bar. As you can see, the openings on the top picture to the right, those are kicked out. They've purposely kicked them out to get into that facility. So the next slide's gonna show them a solution that we've come up with.
Which, there's a solution, we added extra support to it. They've tried to vandalize it, but they were unsuccessful, so I'm hoping it's working.
So they're kicking it open to get in onto the field, to play on the field, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So-
Leave the field unlocked?
I mean, part of that whole, I mean, we've had that discussion before about our fields being locked up.
So-
Just so you know, the grass fields are open right next to it, and they're able to use that facility. This facility is also, also open on Sundays to the public to use.
Yeah, I know, we, we made some changes-
Right.
-about trying to do that, and they still.
So staff is actually working on repairing, we're actually almost done with all the damages. We're just waiting for more, at a cost of six thousand, five hundred. And that pretty much concludes my-
Actually, I'd like to add one section or one part to this. So the synthetic field, the normal wear, uh, life expectancy of a artificial turf is ten to twelve years. This is already seven years old, so I wanted to let you know that we will be adding that to the C I P this year, because it's about five years out. Hopefully, we can get that twelve, twelve years out of it, but the cost-
Was five, half a million, eight years ago.
To install.
To install. And then as, as we, sorry, I had a little bit more, I, I, I lied, I'm not-
What, you have, you have more, more good news?
So here's the other parks that Armando mentioned, that, you know, we had six parks. Here's Ashboro Top Lot that needs upgrades, needs to be replaced.
And can no longer get parts.
And can no longer get parts, square post.
Square post, I knew that was coming.
Fifty-three thousand. Here is your Canyon Creek Park. Another one with square posts. They no longer make parts. A hundred and thirty-four thousand to replace. Here is Emerald Vista Park. Same thing, obsolete. A hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And this one's Lake Canyon, same thing, obsolete parts, no longer make. We've actually removed slides from this park. And we're gonna remove another one. We actually removed one. We have to remove another one. It's a hundred and fifty-one thousand to repair. This park is in really need of, this park and Greer is in really need of playgrounds.
So is, let's say we, I mean, I'm frugal. So we buy, so we're taking, so we're taking apart the community park. Are any of, are any parts ever interchangeable? I know every park has its own structure. We've made every park different with their own structures. If we were to buy new park equipment for like, community park that we're doing, are there any of those parts that are able to be used in other facilities?
No, because I've asked that question. They're not interchangeable. So basically, how they explained it to me is if there's a Chevy and there's a Chevy Malibu, it's kind of, they're not the same brands. So basically, the square posts are Lockville, Miracle Lockville, and they no longer make Lockville. And we can't interchange parts from this park to this park because the plastic is so thin on the slides because of the sun beaming on it. So we're pretty much, we're not able.
The park structures themselves, so many of them are metal. I mean, they look like they're holding up. It's all the accessory pieces.
It's plastic.
The problem?
Yeah, it's plastic.
And so we just have to replace it all because we can't get the parts and they can't be fabricated?
Correct.
In fifteen and twenty years, when we have to replace some of these, they won't make the round post anymore.
Exactly.
So what you're telling us about the only park in town that doesn't need any service is Monterey Park?
Actually, yes. Monterey needs.
If you have a public comment, you can fill out a speaker sheet.
Come up to the podium.
Excuse me, if you want to make public comment, if you'll fill out a speaker sheet, I'd be happy to have you come up after we get done. Oh, after we get done, we'll open it up for a public comment.
So, pretty much if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Hope I covered everything. And I'm so glad that my presentation is over.
Rather sobering. Armando's gonna come up and tell us that we got two great parks now? No, you need no maintenance?
Actually, no. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be the fun guy. We're gonna talk about facility rentals. Yeah, so.
Before we move on, if she has questions in regards to this part of it, I'll go ahead and take her public comment. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. The two things I would like to bring up that, and if I mispronounce your name, Lori, please forgive me because I grew up with a family by that name in the Bronx. I know it is Hoyer. If I'm incorrect, please correct me.
That's perfectly okay.
Okay. My two things are, you brought it up beautifully and I was a product of it. The so-called Meadowview Park, I was part of the renovation on it through United Way and Carmax and Elk Grove. We spent two days on it. It's ergonomically correct in the sense of it's not grass or whatever. And it would be a lot less maintenance to do, as you brought up so beautifully, an ergonomically correct playground. It can be done. The maintenance is a lot less. And I'm not only talking about the grass, the equipment itself could be ergonomically correct for the weather, for vandalism, and whatever. And it has been done. I was part of it. At the time, I was on a cane with an arthritic knee, so I couldn't do like, the lifting of the lumber and stuff like that. But I was able to do the mixture for the cement and whatever to work it out. So as you beautifully brought it up ergonomically, it can be done. It may be a little bit more in the beginning, but it's gonna be a lot less in the maintenance on the end. That's that. And now I'd like to bring up a question directly because I've been through it. I didn't hear anything about, for instance, in the restrooms, for disabled accommodation. I think in this day and age, it would have to be a requirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two more sections only, so just bear with us. So in this section, we'll be talking about our community centers, our Littleton and Shabola Center. In two thousand thirteen, I know we can't read that, so let me blow it up a little bit for you. So in two thousand thirteen, City Council voted to allow local nonprofits to use the Shabolas or Littleton Center one-time, free of charge per calendar year with the following stipulations. That they pay a hundred and fifty-dollar cleaning deposit. That they basically set up the facility themselves. They clean up, sweep, mop. In two thousand seventeen, these groups here took advantage of our one-time free rental. Lions Club, Oak View Parents Club, Rules Men's, Tiny Smiles, LaHeim, Galt Historical Society, and it goes on there. Although we waive the fee, that doesn't mean that there isn't a cost to those rentals. Our restroom supplies, depending on which event is going on at crab feed. You guys have been to those crab feeds where they're just wall-to-wall people. Up to eighty dollars to use just for the restroom supplies. Cleaning supplies up to sixty dollars. There's obviously a cost to heat and AC, light, power, and trash. When I say up to fifty dollars, with these crab feeds is, they're still leaving all of the shells. So we actually have to get another dump from cow waste at a cost of fifty dollars to dump the extra from that event. So there is another fifty-dollar cost to us. There's obviously a cost to water, wear and tear to the facility. And typically, although that they do a really good job at cleaning up, it is still not rental-ready. So typically, we spend about, or public work staff spends about two hours cleaning the facility. When I, that four hours is typically for crab feed. Cleaning up, getting that smell out, and they'll really spend a little extra time on that.
Polishing the floors?
Yes, polishing the floors. We also have a, you know, half-hour pre, half-hour post inspection going over these facilities with these nonprofits. And then approximately about an hour admin time for our staff to go through, make sure that the contract's filled out, the insurances, any ABC licenses and those type of things. So what I basically wanted to do is just make you informed that there are costs associated with this. We're not recommending anything at this point. We just wanted, as we go into the budget, you need to understand what we're budgeting for and what our costs are. If you have any questions regarding this, I'd be glad to answer.
What would all these roll-up costs be if you were to try and just do a cost recovery on these?
I was kind of just going over it through my head and I'm thinking, depending on the event, anywhere between three and five hundred dollars would be, I think, a recovery cost, I mean, to recover what we see here. Obviously, that wouldn't be the wear and tear. You know, the tables break down, the chairs, the painting, just the things that have to be replaced.
And what do we rent it for, for other than nonprofits?
We have quite a few rentals for private rentals, weddings and that type of thing.
And the cost for those?
I believe it's at twelve hundred dollars.
Armando, so let's say on the crab feeds, when you have to bring in the extra dumpster, do we take that out of the cleaning deposit since we're having to go up and beyond? Or we're just returning everybody their hundred and fifty dollars?
If they leave it in an acceptable condition, we're returning the hundred and fifty dollars?
We might want to consider a cleaning fee.
Yeah.
Not a deposit, but a cleaning fee.
So do any of these organizations come back and rent the facility a second time? I mean, I understand we're, you know, waiving it the first time. Does anybody?
I asked that question for my AA and she said no. There were no return.
So everybody rents it, gets it one time, doesn't pay anything, and never comes back and rents it again in the same calendar year, or rarely?
If there are no further questions on this section, I'll move on.
Do we have a different rate for nonprofits than we have? So let's say I'm a nonprofit and I come back to rent it a second time. I rented it the first time, I got it free, I came back to rent it a second time. Do I pay the same as a private party or do I pay a different?
We have a local nonprofit rate at six hundred dollars. And then the out-of-town rate, a local rate, which is just a little more expensive than, I believe, our residential rates start at twelve hundred. And then out-of-town rate goes up even higher than that.
Out-of-town meaning out of the city limits or out of the?
Out of the city limits.
And we may want to add, on the Littleton Center, you know, we're currently under some construction that will be starting pretty quickly to replace the facade. You know, there's a lot of deferred maintenance and issues that we've been having there with the cost of that is, yeah, that final bid, but.
Well, even replacing the stoves was a lot more than.
At so many bids, I've lost track. I believe that the siding work that we're currently doing, Anne, do you remember?
So the parapet, and it's sixteen thousand dollars for the materials. And it's fifty-five thousand dollars for the company.
For the public, I believe you said sixteen thousand for the materials. Another fifty-five thousand for the contractor to take those materials. And we split that intentionally. We were able to get some economy purchases if we would bulk order some of the materials and contractor didn't have to go through that. We actually can use US Communities to get sort of a state government rate on the materials. And then use that company to find a contractor to give us the best price.
And I know when I had, when we had the community dinner there, I had a member of the public who was in a wheelchair. And she said, the bathrooms are not wheelchair-accessibles because of when they were done, they're not wheelchair-accessible. So we have a community center that is not ADA compliant. And then when you look outside, you look at the parking lot and the concrete around it. I mean, it's all buckled from the redwoods and it's lifted. And I mean, when you look at the facility, it has some really, I mean, we showed the pictures of the park. If you went and showed all the pictures of the community center, it likewise is a facility that is in desperate need of repairs.
That'll be the next presentation by Facility Maintenance.
Okay. I mean, you know, when you start walking around these things and have a critical eye, you start seeing all of this stuff and going, oh my god.
And a lot of the things that we're pointing out are in that poor-condition area. There's still a lot of costs associated to those facilities that we didn't bring up, you know. But we just wanted to make sure you're aware of what's actually in our parks. Okay, let's go on to happier things, special events.
And one more, Armando. And that's a facility that's approaching, what, forty, forty years old or so?
It would have, it's older than the sports complex, I believe.
Built around nineteen eighty, I believe.
So.
About forty years old?
Yeah.
About the life of anything that needs major rehab. I mean, a home that's forty years old needs major rehab.
Did I miss it? Did you give us a total cost of all those estimates?
Expensive.
They're just informational. There is no total cost of what it.
What you want?
Yeah. So now, special events. So the city holds three events itself. We have the annual Winter Bird Festival, the Independence Day Celebration, and the Lighting of the Night Event. The first two, the Winter Bird Festival and IDC, staff goes out and gets sponsorships to offset the cost. And we come pretty close. If not, we actually do cover all costs on that. Next meeting, I will be bringing back a staff report on the Winter Bird Festival. And then the Lighting of the Night Event, city actually pays for all of the staff time to, for the Shabola, excuse me, the Littleton Center event and the street closures. In two thousand seventeen, City Council passed a special events sponsorship policy and voted to sponsor these events here. So you have the Chamber Event, Tiny Smiles, Shop Local Extravaganza, Chamber, Strawberry Festival, Shop Local, and the list goes on, totaling close to thirty thousand dollars. We do have some good news in that with the Fourth Street Promenade now up and running and the, I'm not gonna say all-weather track, but the track behind the promenade, we are no longer needing to close the C Street. And so there's a cost savings there. I was also notified by the Chamber that the Strawberry Festival, they will not be holding their annual event. So there's another cost savings there. Bringing that total down to about eighteen thousand dollars. And one of the reasons that I bring this up is that we're currently accepting applications for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen fiscal year through March. And then, so this will also be in the budget. I will also be bringing you back the information regarding the costs associated with these events during the budget also.
Eighteen nineteen, correct? You said seventeen.
I'm sorry. Eighteen nineteen. I apologize. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer the, regarding the special events or any of the presentation that you saw. Speechless, huh?
It's sobering. When, so, a question. Emily's gone. But we have, we've never set up any sort of, in our budget, there's no deferred maintenance setup for any of these issues in these parks or in the lighting and landscape districts or anything, correct?
No.
So all of these are just costs that are out there, facilities that need
Correct.
Maintenance. You know, it's interesting on, in some of the social media sites, you know, oftentimes we're compared to parks in Elk Grove or parks in other areas. You know, Elk Grove has a population, it's at least ten times ours, I don't know. It's far, far more than our population. I mean, for a little town of twenty-five thousand people, we actually have far more parks than a lot of communities our size would have.
Yes, we do.
I think that, you know, councils in the past have really done a really good job on trying to have us having facilities. It's just really, it's just reached the point now that they're not being maintained and we have to figure out some way to be able to do that.
Yeah. We've stretched this as far as we can. But that's true. A lot of communities our size, I think if you were to compare the Parks and Rec staff, if they have any, it's, you know, one or two. I mean, it's, you know, maybe a softball field, maybe a swimming pool. They haven't got the facilities we have for the population.
I looked at Lodi a couple of years ago and compared our park system to theirs and we're pretty much on par with what Lodi does. And they're, what, three times?
Three times, yeah.
Three times, yeah, they're about eighty thousand.
And we could thank the Galt Market for all of that, you know.
And that's really true. We always really need to remember that, you know, when I moved here, you know, the population was six thousand people and the Galt Market was, you know, was sustaining six thousand people plus the outside, maybe, you know, that small population. Now our population's grown and the market income has dropped. So we now can't depend upon the market to maintain everything for us.
We're still lucky that we're subsidizing it with the market. But now we're having to really go into the general fund and asking for some of that money to help fund some of these projects.
And a lot of this deferred maintenance, I'm hoping, would be at least documented, if not addressed, in a long-range strategic plan, which then would feed into budgets. So we've started that process. Probably five years too late.
Have you shared this presentation with the Parks and Rec Commission?
No, I'm sorry, I have not.
Tried it on us first, huh?
So will you be doing that?
I will.
Any other further questions from council? We have some public comments. Sherri Daly?
Very good presentation. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Armando.
Thank you.
I tell you, in all the years of me coming to council meetings and watching council meetings, I've never seen a presentation quite so thorough as to what our real needs are.
Thank you, Steph. You guys did really well.
Hi, I might be bankrupting the next session. I'm not sure when we're going to get to how we pay for this. But it seems like a lot of the conversation has been around fees and maybe raising fees for individuals and maybe raising fees for some of our nonprofits. And I just wanted to know how the park impact fees intersect with this. So I know that for a long time, we've been competing with other markets for housing. So we have to be really mindful of what that park impact fee structure, it's hard to say altogether, looks like so that we don't chase off new housing. But I'm just wondering if even our most recent data on how attractive the Galt housing market now needs to be updated. And so I'm just wondering how that all fits into it.
Thank you. One of the iss- One of the issues you'll be bringing back to us is an evaluation of the fees, that's another part of this, correct?
Correct. This is just so you can start studying, getting ready to ask the questions, prepare yourself so when you see our recommendations, you're not going, "Where'd you pull that number out of?" You know, it's, you guys can kind of really have some information to really base that on.
And a lot of these parks were based on developer fees, but once the developers build out and gone, we're stuck with the maintenance, and that's what we're talking about now.
Mayor, would you like me to, you know, maybe have staff address the difference between, you know, developer fees versus deferred maintenance and ongoing maintenance? Because there's definitely a difference in what we're talking about here.
Yes. Sometimes, you know, housing development actually contributes to, there's basically two fees. One is they're Quimby or they dedicate a park, so that is actually the land for the park, based on their population. The city has a policy of five acres of parkland per 1,000 residences, so we do our calculation to determine how much parkland either a subdivision will dedicate or actually pay in lieu fee for. And so that is technically to go for the park site. Then for each single-family home, there's an $8,000 impact fee, which then goes to improvements at the park and what you put into it. So there are no maintenance obligations with those fees, but they're basically for park acquisition and then site development. So the maintenance of it should come in, you know, on the backend, you know, with the properties through the lighting and landscape districts or CFDs that end up paying for it on a long-term basis.
So then the properties that are not in that have to depend.
That's what I was going to add, is you've got about, over half of the town with a majority of the parks that are not in a park district or a landscape and lighting district. I think we do a pretty good job through impact fees and through conditions on new development to mitigate with ongoing, either annexed to lighting landscape or to, with Eastview and some of the other newer proposals, to actually form a new district that can live its life with indexed, you know, cost factors and things, rather than landscape and lighting districts, which are kind of stuck in time and going broke. So we're trying to find a new model to go forward, but that's really going to be, and if you look at your newest, nicest parks, they're in the landscape and lighting districts because it's newer development. And they built those parks and they're paying a lion's share to help maintain those parks, whereas the other parks are just pretty much general property tax, sales tax.
Grandfathered in.
And that's where the strategic planning and the budget, you know, come into play is, you know, we prioritize, you know, the funds that we do have. You know, the other thing is, you know, what I'm working on through with finance is taking a look at all the deferred maintenance, you know, that the city has. It's not only parks, it's our facilities, it's, you know, our IT, it's our vehicles, it's our trees, you know, we have, you know, quite a bit of items that we need to take a look at and start planning on how we're going to maintain this, you know, going into the future. So it's just, you know, one piece, you know, of it that I think the council and the community need to be aware on, you know, how and what it takes to operate a community in a city, and, you know, some of the, you know, ideas, you know, we need ideas from the community on how to tackle these issues.
And prioritize them.
And prioritize, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Farmer, you said miscellaneous public comment, is it regarding this issue?
Yes, it is. Regarding the presentation, Mr. Solis. Just wanted to mention a couple of things. That was a good presentation. It's nice to see like a snapshot of, you know, where all the money goes, and I myself participate in a lot of sports, the softball, adult softball, so I know. So two things, one, talking about like the fees, I know back when they used to do out-of-town, out-of-area fees, you know, a lot of the people that play on the adult leagues, I'm speaking specifically with that, you know, they come from out-of-town, and so to say, "Oh, we're going to charge them more," it actually might end up hurting the participation of the sign-ups, when you think you may be capturing more money, but you actually may be able to turn people away, because I know there's a lot of talk with the team saying, "Oh, you know, it's cheaper to play over here, I'm not going to play in Galt anymore because I can go over here and I get more games," and blah, 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 whatever. But we all want to play here because this is our town. But we do bring a lot of people from other communities, and not just aside from those people, but people that live, you know, we're a rural community, so a lot of our population lives in the country. So to alienate, to say, "Well, you have to live in the city limits," or "Are we going to pay X amount more?" It might hurt the programs. I know, Armando knows these programs better than anybody, so I just want to stress that there was comments to him saying, you know, "What can the market bear?" And he's going to be an expert on that, and I'm sure he'll advise you correctly on that more than I can, but I just, that's the key thing, is what can the market bear? What can we afford to charge people before we start losing participation? Because I know that they rely on a lot of that. Second thing I want to talk about is the use of the Littleton. I know we were talking about the nonprofits specifically, you know, a lot of these, I know a lot of people come and organizations say, "Can, you know, can I get the facility? I'm nonprofit," and they're asking for, not, I wouldn't say handout, but can we use the facility? What I want everybody to remember when we're talking about the costs that are involved in that is that a lot of these organizations that use these facilities generate money that is then spent on the community, that the city then doesn't have to give out that money. I mean, they generate and they take care of a certain specific need in the community, like when the Rotary Club, or like when the community dinner that a lot of the council members were at serving food, you know, we're providing a very important service to the community that sometimes it's really hard to put a direct cost on. There's a feedback that goes back to the community that's hard to actually say specifically, but it does trickle back into the community, not only in dollars, but in a service that we're providing, you know, a sense of community and things like that. So I really think we, you know, need to really think about that hard when we're talking about what we charge for nonprofits and if we can get more money out of them, this and that, just, I think it's an important thing, it needs to be remembered when we're talking about that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any direction to staff?
Do you want any directions from us?
If you'd like to give me any, you can ask my wife, I listen well and take direction with me. So if, I'd be glad to take any direction you'd like to offer.
No, I think the point is, is we've started down a path for a strategic plan, which feeds into the budget, feeds into the priorities of all this stuff, so there's, we just started the journey.
And this was just to inform you of where we are. We're not, you know, looking at, you know, I use the nonprofits as an example because people don't realize there's expenses to that. You know, "Hey, waive the fee, no big deal." Well, yeah, there's toilet paper, lights and that type of thing. This is just to make, to inform you, so when you do see our budget, when we do come in and ask for the money, well, why are you doing that?
Yeah, and it would be no harm to ask the nonprofits for a donation to the city, right?
That would be a policy decision made by council.
I mean, if they wanted to.
Jean, just one other question in regards to ADA compliance with our facilities and our parks and things. We have, the city does have a plan, I mean, we don't have the funding base, but we do have a plan regarding and are aware of some of our facilities that were, you know, grandfathered in because they were built before, with building requirements.
That's all correct. We have an ADA plan that was adopted by the council, I believe, in 2014, that, you know, we're kind of following, you know, those guidelines or, you know, the projects in that to, you know, bring those facilities or sidewalks into compliance, so it'll, you know, over time.
You know, when you're talking about restroom renovations and stuff like that, there's a certain dollar amount that absolutely triggers it, you don't, you can't get out of it, whether you're a city or not.
Right. If that's the case, then we will comply and, you know, do the upgrades.
Thank you. Communication?
I have none tonight.
City Clerk's report?
Nothing tonight.
Comments by staff? Mr. Winkler?
I just wanted to give you a heads up, and you'll be hearing more from us, as will the public. We've awarded, actually a couple of months ago, the, sort of the next big thing in terms of infrastructure project, which is Safe Routes to School, Bike Ped, and Roadway Rehabilitation. It's a combination of about five different grant programs, and then leveraged against our, some of our Measure A and our new SB1 enhanced gas taxes that are now starting to trickle in this month, and that project will actually be starting in early March. We'll be going out with some resident advisories and keeping council informed, you know, letting them know what's coming to a number of streets in the South Galt Old Town area, and some 200 curb ramps that are not ADA compliant currently are going to be replaced or new ramps put in, infill gap sidewalks on a number of the key routes to our schools where there are no sidewalks today, want to get the kids out of the street, and then there are other pedestrian and bike path enhancements, as well as trying to fix up five or six of our major arterials feeding the schools in the Old Town area. So it's going to be a busy summer on a very large project, and we'll be trying to keep the public and the press, and we'll be working with the clerk on keeping Facebook up to date on kind of where we're going next, and we're going to, you know, be doing regular advisories to the streets and the blocks and the residents that'll be impacted. You know, we'll do some general handouts probably the next couple of weeks to those residents across all of those streets, and then as we get closer to their specific street, sidewalk work, curb work, pavement work, we'll be giving them updates along those streets. So we're going to try to keep the community informed, and it's going to be one of those breaking eggs to make the all-mot kind of experiences for us again, but it's going to be a great project for the city. We're putting about $1 million into a $5 million project that has net into the city.
I'd have to check, but when is Safe Routes to School, they have a day, a year that they have a Safe Routes to School Walk Day or something like that? I believe it's in the fall sometime, so you'll be done by then, so we can try it out?
Actually, the goal is to be done before school starts in the fall. We've got some funding deadlines we have to meet as well. We'll be doing some early starts during school on areas that aren't directly adjacent to the schools, and then during the summer while schools are out, we're going to hit those streets pretty hard.
Ms. Boyd? Armando?
I'd like to thank my staff.
Are you done? Your staff did a great job.
I'd like to thank my staff, just not for tonight, I have an amazing staff, and we had the Winter Bird Festival on January 20th, so publicly, I'd like to thank Leslie Sheets, Monica Lopez, Armando Morales, and all of their staff that helped us with that event. I'm blessed to have these guys on my staff right now.
It was really a beautiful day.
Yeah.
It was a great day for it. Chief?
And I don't have anything tonight. Nothing more to add, thank you.
I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay, moving on to comments by city council members and future agenda items. Mr. Campion?
Nothing.
Ms. Lamson?
No, thank you.
Mr. Malsen?
Oh, I think everybody's heard enough of my comments tonight.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
I'm good.
So that said and done, we're meeting adjourned.